It's working now. Did you just turn me off? That's amazing. All right. This is my last meeting. I'm gonna go ahead and call this last meeting of mine to order. As mayor. Can I ask for a roll call?
Councilmember Pulipati.
Here.
Councilmember Sander.
Here.
Councilmember Budge.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Terry.
Here.
Mayor Gatewood.
Here. Uh, Stacy, can you go ahead and read the recording and playback schedule?
The meeting of the Rancho Cordova City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will air Thursday, December 23rd at 9:00 a.m. and Friday, December 24th at 9:00 a.m. The meeting can also be viewed at youtube.com/metrocable14. A DVD copy can be ordered from the City Clerk's Department. And a webcast of this meeting will also be available on the city's website within 48 hours of adjournment of this meeting.
Alright, thank you. I'm gonna go ahead and call on Diane Rogers and ask everyone to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America.
The United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, can I ask everyone to keep standing? And we're going to go ahead and have Sheri DeShawn. If she's here in Zoom, or she... Hey Sheri, come up! That's awesome, I didn't even see you over there. It's that mask hides from everybody.
That's it, that's it.
Alright, everyone bow your heads.
Father God, we just thank you for the wonderful privilege it is to live in these United States, to live in Rancho Cordova. Uh, we thank you for the many people that it takes to lead this city. We thank you for Garrett. Uh, we thank you for his many, 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 many hours of service. We thank you for the upcoming Vice Mayor and Mayor coming in. We pray for showering of your precious blessings upon these people as they work in service for you, God, carrying out what is on this agenda, which is your agenda, Father God. Thank you for the privilege, in Christ's name, amen.
Amen, thank you so much. Alright. At this point, I'm going to go ahead and call on for the swearing in of the Mayor and Vice Mayor ceremony. So I'm gonna call Dare Langwell to swear in the Honorable Linda Budge.
This way we don't have to bother with the microphones.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Linda Budge, do solemnly swear.
I, Linda Budge.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
That I take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Yay! Alright, and now, oh, I'm gonna call on the City Clerk Stacy to play the swearing in video of our most honorable Donald Terry.
Oh, we had it for a second.
Make sure David.
For the Office of Mayor of the City of Rancho Cordova, I, Donald Terry.
I, Donald Terry.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
I will support.
And defend.
Defend.
The Constitution.
Constitution.
Of the United States.
The United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of California.
State of California.
Against all enemies.
Enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear.
I will bear.
And allegiance. To the Constitution.
To the Constitution.
Of the United States. And the Constitution. Of the State of California. That I will take this obligation freely. Without any mental reservation. Or purpose of evasion. And then I will well.
And I will well.
And faithfully.
And faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I... Upon which I am about to enter.
Let's see here. Oh, we have a celebratory thing? Well, why don't we?
And there was much applause.
Yes, there was. Um... Do we want to do this presentation first? But, uh, we went through...
Yeah, do the presentation first.
Is that agenda? No, right there. Yeah.
So we can all celebrate time.
Then I can recess. Yeah, so we'll go to 5.3. So Garrett, I'll ask you to join me down at the...
Lecter podium, whatever. I like holding stuff and trying to hold it. Alright.
That's about where we need to be. Um... So your first gavel.
That's my first gavel.
I think so, right? This plaque is bigger, but the gavel's, I think, the same size as the rest of the ones that we got. Well, congratulations on a great year. We all know it's been a trying couple of years. And as your first go-round as Mayor, I think you did a great job.
Alright.
Thank you for your leadership.
Thank you. That was awesome.
Alright. So, um, I just want to say that it's been an amazing year. It's been a trying year, and I think Rancho Cordova is actually better off than last year. And so it was nice to be the Mayor where everything started to open back up again and start to help find ways that during COVID, we can actually grow. I think we've saved thousands of businesses, grown the city in the right direction. And I think we're finding new ways to communicate with our citizens and actually step in the right direction. So I want to thank all of the staff, especially Stacy and Cyrus and Maria, I think she's back there, and my favorite person, Ashley, and of course, um, all the group that supported me through the whole thing. Diane and Anil, thank you for all your support. And I'm sorry for all the convenience and the problems that I caused not being the most astute Mayor. But thank you again, and I can't wait to see what happens next year. Yeah, yeah, so let's just finish the presentations and we'll take a break. So with that, we will move on to... Yeah, let's do, let's do 7.1, and then we'll take a break. Does that work?
It works.
If I may ask you to please join me here. Good evening, Council, members of the audience. Tonight, we're here to honor and celebrate somebody who's been part of the city family for almost 16 years. As we, and we wish him well as he embark on the next journey of his life to go into retirement. Todd joined the city in 2006, and he has been responsible for maintaining and repairing over 200,000 square feet of city-owned and leased space. Yeah, Todd's history, of course, with the community goes back a long ways. Before working for the city, he worked for the San Juan School District. He's also a veteran, a military veteran. So his connection to this community goes back as far back as 1978. Todd has represented the city in many different capacities. He represented the city on the, there's the Regional Board of Operation Area for Sacramento for emergencies. He also served the city and also represented the city on Cordova Community Council Board of Directors. Because of that and because of the work he's done, he's been at every single event, attending different activities, participated. He has rolled up his sleeves, he helped, he has helped with the events. He has done tremendous amount of work in making our events more successful and, and definitely more smooth with, with the work that he's done in the background. He was also involved in demolition of Sagrino and Grand D Apartments. He helped us with the construction of the Mather Arts and Culture Center, the MAC. He was, he, he, he's supported us as in the capacity of project manager for the construction of the project. He's gone through a variety of leadership programs, including continuing education for public officials and Rancho Cordova Leadership, graduate of Class VII, as I recall. And I think lastly, what I want to say is, having worked with Todd for all these years, it's, uh, it's hard to, uh, not notice his passion and his love for this city and for this community. He has worked very hard, he has, uh, you know, the nature of his job requires to be, for him to be available after hours, on the weekends. Many times that we would get an emergency call or a response that we have to provide at 2:00 in the morning on Saturday or Sunday, he's, uh, he's able, available, and ready to roll up the sleeves and help. He, uh, he's not at all shy about getting in the trenches and if something is broken, to fix it. He's worked and acted as a great role model for our young employees who have come on board throughout the, the course of his career. And many of them have moved on to, uh, to, uh, get either a college degree or get to greater positions. And it's been all because of Todd's commitment, inspiration, and mentoring that he has provided. I've been honored to work with him, I wish him well. He has, uh, he has been a great resource for all of our employees. And upon his retirement, we would like to present him with this proclamation, and I wish him well. And thank you for all you've done, Todd.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Todd.
So, can you hold that? Well, they know it's me.
Should I just say to you?
Yes, I would. Mayor, Councilmembers, city staff, and guests here tonight. Just want to say I appreciate all these years working here, it's been a pleasure. Everyone has been great to work with, all the different nonprofits and the Chamber, you name it. There's so many different groups here that's wonderful to serve, and it's been an enjoyment for me. I appreciate that you've trusted me to take care of your buildings and lots and all your leased space. It's, it's truly been a pleasure to serve the city of Rancho Cordova. And I won't be too far away, so hopefully I'll continue to be somewhere around. I want to say I enjoyed my tour on the Cordova Community Council. Great place to, um, to get to know all the great things that are happening behind the scenes in Rancho Cordova. It's a wonderful team there as well, so I, I really enjoyed that you gave me that opportunity. It was really wonderful. So thank you, appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just add...
Presentations. Thank you, sir. With that, we'll take a 30-minute recess? 15 minutes? Think we... You, you're gonna say, okay, we'll take a 15-minute break? Move some chairs and be right back? To address the council, for any matter not on the agenda, may do so at this time via teleconference or by completing and submitting a speaker card to the City Clerk. If you want to make a public comment via teleconference, please use the raise hand feature at the bottom of the, the bottom center of your screen. If you're participating by telephone and you want to make a public comment, please press star nine to raise your hand. For those participating by Zoom or telephone, please wait to be called upon by the City Clerk. For items on the agenda, speakers will be called, will be called by the Mayor at the point on the agenda when the item will be heard. Speakers are encouraged to keep their comments to three minutes or less and state the name and community of residence. Under the provisions of the California Government Code, the City Council is prohibited from taking or, excuse me, is prohibited from discussing or taking immediate action on any item not on the agenda unless it can be demonstrated to be of an emergency nature or the need to take immediate action arose after the posting of the agenda. Do you have any speaker cards?
Yes.
Okay, let's go ahead and, let's go ahead and take the comments in the room, then we'll go to Zoom.
Okay, so the speaker cards that I have, we'll start with Angel Ball. Following Angel Ball, Joyce Rosenberg and Fiza Mughal.
Ready? My name is Angel Ball, and I'm here tonight, I better put my glasses on. I'm here tonight to set the record straight. My comments are regarding the December 6th regular City Council meeting. City Clerk Leitner introduced Item 19.3 as the Mills Crossing Project update. Micah Runner, Deputy City Manager, stated before we begin, he wanted to apologize for the na, change in the name on the agenda and the presentation, and that it was not intentional. Then Mr. Runner began the staff report by introducing the Mills Station Civic Center and the Mills Station Project. So when there, when the error was discovered by staff, it was called yet another name. I ask not intentional or deliberate. These actions confuse the public. I respectfully request that the Mills Crossing Civic Center be placed on the next City Council agenda with the publicly known title so that the public can be informed and noticed. Now, for the record, I will share the information that City Council and staff had since June 18th of 2021. A binder is located in Council chambers with all public comments submitted for that meeting and maintained by the City Clerk. Item 19.3 had approximately 30 public comments in which, which included the citizen's email address. Micah Runner, Deputy City Manager, also told all of us that he knew the email addresses were on the comments. Please show Exhibit 1. Exhibit 1 is an email I sent at 12:04 p.m. on June 18th using the Save the Civic Center document. In, uh, underlined in blue is my email address. It is also located on the two-line. While that is out of the ordinary, city staff was able to figure that out. Exhibit 2, please. Exhibit 2 shows a city email response three minutes later back to me at my email address. So you did have the email address of your citizens. Your accusations are erroneous. The record must reflect that since June 18th of 2021, the City of Rancho Cordova staff and council have received over 250 public comments via email that included the citizens' email addresses. That's five and a half months. On July 27th of 2021, Mayor Gatewood, Autumn Eberhart, and myself held a meeting at the Civic Center property. For about an hour and a half, we discussed the project and asked questions. We had unanswered questions, and Mayor Ga, Ga, Gatewood felt we should have the answers, so he suggested we meet every other week until all questions are answered. On December 6th, during the City Council meeting, City Manager Abhar and Mayor Gatewood led a narrative that the coffees with the mayor were those meetings. That was news to me. Then each City Council member dog piled on to the erroneous story that the coffee with the mayors were the meetings. You made a commitment for meetings every other week. This commitment was not kept, and I'm not going to allow you to state it was.
Your time is up?
For the record, we believed we were going to have Civic Centers meeting, civic center meetings, 'cause the mayor said so. This ends my comment on setting the record straight.
Good evening. My comments are brief, they're mostly housekeeping comments, but they're things that have bothered me for a couple of years. I would really appreciate it. I would really appreciate it if you would keep your cameras on, even though you were not talking, and your mic, and your mics are off. We would like to see your reaction to thi, things that are on camera. We can't, if we can't see you, if we've got a dark camera, we don't know how you feel about it, if you hate it, if you love it. If it nauseates you, whatever, I would really appreciate. You're here for the meeting, you may not be here, but I'd sure like to see your face on the screen. And while we're talking about the screens, if there's a way that we could not have the scroll words across the bottoms of the screen where there's often people's faces. I don't know how they do it on TV, but it would sure be nice if the pictures of the people were up and the scroll, the scroll, scroll was below it. I don't know how to do that, I know nothing about technical stuff, but it sure would. And I know that it doesn't happen on that screen you're looking at behind you, but it does happen on those two screens. So it would be really helpful, we could just see your faces. We're here to, we've got our faces sticking out here, we'd sure like to hear, see yours. If a project has the same, the same thing with the working title, it's very difficult when you keep changing the name of something. I had to call somebody one day about the December 6th meeting saying, "Are they talking about the Civic Center slash Community Center?" And the answer was yes, except it's Mills Crossing, so... It would really be nice if we had the same name each week, each time. And also, that would probably have helped the attendance at the mayor's coffees. My biggest problem is when the agenda is set out, the items of huge interest for which there are many, many people. Remember the motor vehicles, vans, boats, whatever, all the things that were in driveways and the people were complaining about the motor homes, et cetera? And there was a huge crowd here. There was a huge crowd here for the Mills Station meeting a couple of weeks ago. And yet, those items are always at the bottom of the agenda. Why? It didn't used to be that way when I first was coming to the meetings. It wasn't like that, but somehow now that stuff sinks to the bottom of the barrel, and, and I don't know why. And I also had a question about the fact that last week on the 6th, we sat and listened to 15 to 20 minutes of a very nice young lady speaking very rapidly about costs. And this is $16 million, and this is whatever, and this is this, and this is that, and this is... And pretty soon, I, I felt boggled, and I don't know why all that time was spent when we were still waiting to get to our agenda. Those me, numbers were meaningless to us because the project hasn't even been approved yet.
Your time is up?
Oh, no. Okay, well, I'd just like to tell you that if we can't have meetings that have anything, I, I... They used to say in government, if you can't dazzle them with data, baffle them with BS. And that's what we were afraid was happening, like, I was afraid, I was afraid was happening. Thank you.
The next speaker is Fiza Mughal. Following Fiza will be Autumn, and following Autumn will be Helen.
Hello, this is Fiza Mughal from Lincoln Village. Typically, I'll prepare remarks before I come up here, so I know what I want to say. Uh, this week I didn't bother. I have a lot on my mind, I'm not even sure what would be appropriate to say over here. But I want to stop worrying about what I'm saying being appropriate because that is not the level of care I receive when I come up to this podium from you, from you guys, from you all. We were here last week, and essentially you called us liars. Um, you accused us of hiding the emails of people that sent in public comments. You sort of kind of directed us on what we should and shouldn't say. Somebody told us to go eat some broccoli. Comments made about being an adult in the room, and the connotation being that the rest of us weren't acting or behaving like adults. And so I realized there is almost no point in me toning it down or me being careful, or me editing myself if that's not what I'm getting from you all. It got to the point on December 6th where one of you began a diatribe during the council portion of the Civic Center presentation. I got up and left, like, at a protest, I'm not sitting here for that shit. And I want things to change. It's not the first time I've showed up here and been rebutted or felt unwelcome, or been accused of lying, or had somebody say that I lied. To the extent that one time Adam had to call me up the next day and be like, "Oh, you were right." And our staff member was wrong. They misspoke. But yeah, it happens where sometimes things don't line up and there's a mistake, but to be called a liar, not just on the 6th, but like June 21st also. So a lot of the issues are things that have been carrying over, over a long period of time, and I'm kind of fed up of it. And you guys need to do better, you need to treat us better. And when you see grassroots efforts, don't punch down, don't shut it down, welcome it. 'Cause you need citizen participation. You need us, you need our opinions, and you need to stop elbowing people off the table. It's not cool. Thank you.
Following Fiza will be Autumn Eberhart. Following Autumn will be Helen Bashaw.
Hi, I'm Autumn Eberhart from Cordova Meadows. On December 6th, council felt it was necessary to call out the community for participating in their local government and voicing their concerns on a project that is supposed to be for the community, the Mills Crossing Civic Center project. It turns out some members of the council didn't understand the technology that was being used and stated falsely that there were malicious intentional acts taking place. You allowed your personal bias to cloud your vision against an organized group of residents who agreed on a posit, a position collectively and wanted their voices to be heard. The council received almost 250 public comments between June and December 6th asking the council to listen to their concerns and reengage the community on the Civic Center project. There was insinuation that the people who decided to use the form that was sent from savetheciviccenter@gmail.com were forced to provide a comment that was not truly what they believed. Does this mean that some members of council think their constituents are uneducated, naive, gullible, or possibly worse? And they would send in comments even if they didn't support the position that was presented prior to them taking the time to fill out the form? All those assumptions are incorrect. As it can be seen in public comments that the clerk recorded, residents that used the form agreed with the position and included their own personalized comments. And the major point of contention that email addresses for these individuals was not present was false. City staff, in fact, used the email addresses over the summer to invite those that used the form to one of the workshops that was held. Councilmembers, it's very easy for anyone to get caught up in your, in their own biases on a situation. But you are not anyone, you are looked to as leaders. And when you make statements like how many proposals were provided to the community, your residents take it as facts, because we believe what you are talking about. We trust you to provide us with accurate and truthful information. And if you don't know, we trust you'll share that as well. And so I had some visuals, but I, I messed up and I don't have them to show you. But on July 6th, 2020, there was a staff report that presented that there were eight proposals that the city received. Not 15 or 16 or 20, a random number that was presented at the last meeting. And it also stated that the Evaluation Committee was the one that decided which three of those eight proposals went to the public and to council. I have an email from Set, City Staff dated July 23rd of 2021 asking for the other five proposals, and asking if those were ever shared with the community. And I was told no, they were never shared for the community to see and provide input. And there was also a proposal from Dynamic Entertainment Group, which is, which included a movie theater and a bowling alley and building in three phases. Phase was, one was the multi-entertainment and event center, and phase two was the performing arts center, and phase three was boutique and hotel or multifamily projects. And so when Corinne was asked, "Is this possible?", and he says, "No, because of parking issues", there was a proposal that came in that said it was possible. And we don't know if it was possible or not, right?
Your time is up?
Oh, thank you, Stacy. Because we never got to talk about that proposal. So maybe it's not possible, maybe it wasn't practical, but a company came in and said, "We can do this for you." but a company came in and said, we can do this for you, community. This is what you're asking for. This is what the survey says you're asking for. This is what the residents, some residents, obviously not all, are asking for. And that wasn't provided to the community. And my speech does get a little bit more positive by the end, but I'm out of time. So thank you.
The next speaker is Helen Bashaw. Following Helen Bashaw will be Matt Cummings.
Hi, I'm Helen Bashaw from the Chera Grande area. I'm not on the same subject they are. I have something else. I was reading a 2006 document written by the city of Rancho Cordova. It's talking about historical preservation. And in particular, it talked about Site 3030, which is an archaeological site for the Chinese. My question is, does the people in the planning department ever read documents before they go with a builder and say, this is the best site, this is the best plan we've gotten? Or do they, I mean, because it's obvious based on the Cassus property, no one ever read it. That Site 3030 in 2006 was listed as eligible for a historical site because that is a site that represents the Chinese. And the Chinese and Hawaiians were people who were brought in to help settle this country after, during the 1800s. So I don't understand how we've had a presentation. We've let a builder go crazy. We're going to rip out 300 and some shrubs so they have riverside access for their homes when it's in violation of the Wild and Scenic River Act. It's in violation of federal and state requirements and local requirements that no house can be there. And additionally, to put that project in, you have to scrape back five feet of dirt in order to use lime to harden it up. So what I don't understand is that archaeological site and two other are in that area. So why are we going to cause, we're going to desecrate historical sites for a property? We're going to break federal and state laws and local laws by building houses on the edge? Don't the people in the planning department understand the federal, state, and local laws? In particular, the things that Rancho Cordoba put into place when it became cityhood to, before they agreed to an infrastructural build? Or maybe that your people don't understand infrastructural builds? I think somebody, meaning Cyrus, you need to train your people. You need to review some of the plans that were put into place, starting back at cityhood and in 2006. I am for preservation of the Site 330, which is the Chinese archaeological site located on the Cassus property. Thank you.
The next speaker is Matt Cummings. That'll be the last speaker card that I have and then I'll go to Zoom or in those on telephone.
Members of the council, good evening. I was asked to come here tonight to read an email into the record. And here we go. At a recent city council meeting, elected officials and the city manager made comments specifying what they called a quote unquote misinformation campaign, which supposedly misdirected the community into opposing civic center. To my knowledge, there has been no misinformation campaign, no effort to undermine this council. You do it to yourselves with poor community outreach and promises to listen and represent the public, only to vote for a civic center with no meaningful changes. I have listened to these facts, delivered by caring and concerned citizens who have misled no one. At every step of the way, they have sought to educate the public as to the civic center's obvious shortcomings with hard facts. And while David Sander has been gracious enough to listen to these residents, thank you, David, for your attendance the other evening. That sort of outreach these days is, from the rest of you, is hard to find. Instead, resident concerns are ignored, their opinions chided, or staff has directly misled the community by claiming that Civic Center doesn't pencil out any other way but their way. I don't believe that. In fact, I demand that the city produce evidence which supports their claims so we can have a transparent conversation with the community. This is not the council I voted for. This is not the reason why I supported cityhood. I sit here right now and I see two council members not even watching me, which is kind of strange, but evident of where we stand. Our city cannot put up with this kind of political mayhem. It's time for those of you who represent the city to produce specific evidence on which they base their claims. It's time as council stopped the personal attacks and move forward with hard numbers showing why our plan isn't financially viable and why yours is. It's time to start treating these concerned citizens with the respect they deserve, even if you disagree with them. Our city deserves better and shame on any of you who have taken this path because you've really done a horrible job of alienating the very people who voted for you. Thank you.
I am now going to Zoom and the telephone. And I do not see any hands, mayor, that are raised.
With that, we will dispense with public comment and move on to council reports. Councilmember Gatewood.
Thank you.
In the hot seat now.
Okay, so it's been an amazing Christmas events throughout Rancho Cordova. I've been running, gunning. Mayor does take a lot of time and it's interesting trying to get to everything. So first I went to, I want to thank FISA for being the bird in my ear. She got me over to the Lincoln Village Christmas Parade. I got to do that. That was amazing. It's great to see all the citizens and drive around. And I got ahold of the police siren and the cool buttons and I was playing with that. That's just one of those events that it was even windy and rainy, but she had to basically stand out in the middle of everything. And we still were, I still say people were animated and had fun. So the good part is that, you know, it shows that the community's coming together. It was great seeing people show up in their stuff and try to blow things up. And then the most important thing was my kids were there, so they got to see that and we got to play with sirens, which we'll never get to do again, but awesome. So thank you, FISA, for putting that together and thank you for CRPD showing with numbers and then all the city staff that basically showed up that day. Then I've always wanted to do this, so I got jealous because I got to see you do it, Donald. David did it, Linda did it, and it's the Holiday Star Event. So I don't know how many of the citizens know this, but we partner with, of course, PAL and all the school districts and the kids of lower socioeconomic groups or just whoever the principals think have gone outside themselves come together and we give these two kids backpacks. And so it's always touched my heart with these kids because they're always in need and then they get to go on a shopping spree through our Walmart. And then that's crazy because then you see these kids and not only they buy it for themselves, but some are just trying to get groceries and stuff for their families and you just see like the Christmas spirit. So that was amazing. Got to do the Holiday Star Event. Thank you for Maria and Ashley for having me there. And thank you for all my citizens and all the school districts and all the principals that showed up. It was great seeing them all there and get to be involved and really, you know, one of those things during the Christmas Day that you really need to do. Then I got to speak at the Holiday Run, which was cold. And I don't know who those people are that enjoy that, but that's them. That is definitely people. Cyrus is there. I'm sure he was wearing jeans. I didn't understand it. We had a staff group that ran. I had a bunch of my citizens that came up and asked me if I was running and I was like, I'm not a runner because it's freezing out here. But it was great to see everybody. We ran around. More money and investment to 2,500 kids from those donations get to be given gifts and stuff from PAL, so that was amazing. And the group that's going to help run the youth center. Very excited about that and it was great to be put on. Hopefully some good publicity came of that because I know we got some, I know we were on there and a couple of the news reporters really love coming to our city. So the more good press we get for the city, the better. Then of course, I also did the Sacramento Public Library. I'm the VP and right now we're trying to, Vice Chair, and right now we're trying to get money to open a Rancho Cordova, our own library. And so they said they had $2 million in the bucket for us and I was like, great, we can totally spend that. How do we get more? And so right now I'm pushing pretty hard. Hopefully I'll take over chair from Eric Gara and then I can push because my whole agenda being all these boards is to do what's best for Rancho. And I think that having our own library, finding a new location would be an amazing feat. Thank you for, I got to go to the Sacramento Black Chamber of Commerce Annual Installation Business Dinner. It was great seeing all these well-known people in the region coming together. Thank you for recognizing me. You didn't have to. It was just, it's just amazing to see how well and how the businesses have been able to come along and basically survive all the amazing things that are going on in our region. And I believe, let's see, oh, lastly. I didn't know how much work this was, but it was one of those good tires. So I got to give out, oh my gosh, it must have been like 200 cars worth of presents to poor families from the PAL group. And that was awesome. They came alongside, I had my kids with me. They got to give out and, you know, I'm always trying to teach them about giving back to the community. And so they were there and they were excited. That's a lie. He's a high schooler. He hated every minute of it, but it was good and it was great because I got to see all my citizens come through. I got to put like a garbage bag or two or three of presents in there and they were so thankful and it was just like, it was constantly these last two weeks. Rancho has really stepped up and done good work for its community in showing up. And so I was, I feel blessed. It was an honor being the mayor of the city for the time I am. I attempted to change some stuff up. I hopefully, I've set a new pace for us engagement and kind of got from there. So thank you and thank you, Donald.
Thank you, Siri.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I actually attended a lot of the similar events that Garrett Gatewood, council member, did. So I'll start off, first was the Holiday Star Event, which was a really special day because it was my mom's birthday. She turned 75. It was also Cyrus's birthday, who turned a year wiser. So it was a great start where we celebrated these students who despite challenging circumstances worked hard to become high achievers. I asked the principals how they selected the kids and they're like, you know, they just showed me this kid and he came and came right up and hugged me and brought such a big smile on my face. And the principal was, that's why. Because these kids, you know, in spite of everything they're going through, bring a smile to your face and they're high achievers in spite of everything that they have. So these kids were truly stars for their schools and very, very well deserved recognition. I also attended the pre-part of the Lincoln Village Parade. Yes, it was raining, it was windy, but you know, the city staff was there. Rancho Cordova PD was there, the mayor, the police chief, the Metro Fire of Sacramento. Everybody was there in spite of the weather, rain or shine, they were moving on. Great job there, guys. You know, great job by the Lincoln Village team. Yes, I was also at the Rancho Cordova Holiday Run. This was their eighth annual run and council member Garrett Redwood, I was one of those people that did run. I know I should practice more or stretch more before running, but there were nearly 400 people that did the run that day. You know, there were the one mile walk and the 5K run and the 10K run. So nearly 400 people came out in spite of the weather. That afternoon, we did the Cordova in Christmas. Again, that was, this is the RCPD's Youth Services Unit. This was their 11th annual event. Again, brought a smile to my face. I brought my kid along too, to help put toys in the cars for people that truly need it. Yes, there were a few Audis and Teslas in there. They probably were in need, but for the most part, a lot of people got the toys that they very well deserved. I also did the Holiday Lights Drive Thru, which was the Cordova Community Council. It was very well put together. Again, this week, I think it was not one of the best weeks to have outdoor drive-throughs. You know, everything was, a lot of wind. I think a lot of lights came off, but it was a very well put together event. I truly enjoyed it and so did my kids. And last but not the least, I went with the Rotary Club to hand out dictionaries at the Cordova Elementary School. You know, the Rotary Club does a great job, you know, with service above self, trying to hand out and do events for our community. So thank you for their support. My kids truly loved it when they received their dictionary and the kids in the classrooms were overjoyed trying to write their name. And I was really glad that I was able to actually go in a classroom and hand out toy, sorry, dictionaries to the kids and have them see. And I also wanted to thank the Sacramento-Tulungana Association for bringing in a huge bunch of toys to the toy run on, for the RCPD Holiday Run. Thank you, and that's my update. Oh, I also wanted to take a quick, quick minute to say on my comments last week, they were truly fact-based on the fact that it takes, it's a $150 million project. The city is providing $35 million. So sometimes, you know, I said, we, as adults always say, we need to eat broccoli to have cake. So that's, that's my comment. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you, Siri. I'm just checking, Linda, I think you had to step away, right? You're not back? Okay, David, go ahead.
I'm back, Donald.
Oh, you are? Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, sorry. I had grandkids show up unexpectedly.
Always a good thing.
So, yeah. So I would report on three things. Like Siri, I also went with Rotary to deliver dictionaries to Navigator, but unfortunately we were not allowed to distribute them this year. We simply dropped off the boxes. But the funny thing, and I know that all of you parents can identify with this, it was pajama day at Navigator on Friday and one little kid came in his reindeer pajamas, complete with antlers, and another little kid came dressed up as a panda with black and white spots on. It was, it was really just adorable. And I'm hoping that next year, I mean, we all, you know, it's kind of like next year in Jerusalem. I'm hoping that next year we will all get back to a situation where we're able to deliver these dictionaries in person, work with the kids, show them how to open the dictionary, help them write their names, do the contests of finding, you know, finding the flag of their home country, looking up different words the way Dan Skogland and I used to do. And so I'm looking forward to a better time. I want to thank our colleague Siri and our friend Anil sincerely for having come to our leadership class. A couple of weeks ago, we combined the information about the advent of people from other countries coming to Rancho Cordova in the 1970s when the Vietnamese came over, fled the war in Vietnam. And we combined that with an update on some of the, some of the new residents that have come to live with us in the last few years. And so Siri and Anil came and presented an entire lesson on the culture, the art, the lifestyle, the architecture, the caste system in India. And Siri showed everyone how to wrap a sarari, which was absolutely amazing. It turns out to be a very long piece of material, Siri. You'll have to tell us how long it is because I don't remember, but it seemed like it was about 20 feet of material.
Yeah, six yards, six to nine yards.
Okay, so that's, yeah, that's 18, yeah, 18 or so. So, but by the time she got, she got it wrapped up appropriately, this lady from the class was very well dressed up and looked just beautiful. And, but, and then Cyrus's wife, Vida, came and talked about the people from Afghanistan who are here. And it just added a different dimension to that particular lesson in arts, culture, and history that has not been there before. And I am eternally grateful and really appreciate it. And I know Cyrus has said that there may be some offshoots of that kind of effort going forward. And then finally, several of us went to listen to Leticia Ordés come and read one of her children's books in Spanish and English last week at the Children's Museum. And as a result, I'm going to go on Wednesday this week and read The Night Before Christmas to the children at the Children's Museum. And I am always ready to read to kids at school and I'm really looking forward to it. And so I would wish everyone a very Merry Christmas and a prosperous, healthy, and peaceful New Year. Thank you, Donald.
Thank you, Linda. David?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Linda, I also participated in leadership.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Linda, I also participated in leadership, but I don't think I, I ever let, uh, let you guys know in this report. I think I did the first one of the year in leadership. And usually I'm somewhere later in the, in the calendar, but they put me first. And so I had to frame up the, the whole of Rancho Cordova, like, why are we even sitting here? Um, what is this place? Where did we come from? How did we get to this point of having a city? I had to frame up all that in front of my usual, uh, Growing Star Neighborhoods talk. And I think you usually do that sort of history piece. So when you do it next time, they'll have a, they'll have a rough framework, but you'll have to, you'll have to fill in some more detail there. Uh, yeah, because I just did it off the top of my head when I realized this is our very first meeting and they didn't know where they were necessarily. The, uh, Cordova Community Council Lights Show was outstanding, like, and I have to say this as board chair, the, uh, the Cordova Community Council. Everything we do, um, everything we do evolves year to year and it gets better and we learn and it becomes better, uh, with each iteration. So this year, there was great turnout, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and kind of light turnout earlier in the year. So overall, was it sole success? Absolutely. Um, but we also learned how to put those, uh, put those scenes up, a little more efficiency, how to gain efficiently, how to gain sponsorships for them, um, and how to do some better maintenance to keep it in order. Because this year, there's a lot of wind and a lot of rain that made that display particularly challenging. I think it actually had to be canceled twice during the run due to, uh, inclement weather. But, uh, thanks to Shelley and Lee Burchette and the crew at the Cordova Community Council for a really great, uh, really great job done out there. Hundreds of people from the community again went through it, probably thousands, and, uh, and enjoyed that. So it's just one more aspect of why we're a great community in Rancho Cordova. We do these special things that you don't necessarily find in other communities.
So I've got a lot of meetings. David, I understand there may be a couple of exhibits over in Gold River that blew across the freeway.
Yeah, a couple of, uh, they have signs up that sort of indicate where a lot of people from Rancho are from, uh, either immigrants or ethnically whatever.
That's the one I sponsored.
Yeah. And, uh, some of those were removed by the wind, um, to parts apparently unknown at this point. So if you find a sign in your backyard that says Merry Christmas in German or something, um, that's where it came from. Uh, I had a lot of meetings. I won't go into detail about these. Um, as second vice president of the NLC, I'm sort of sorting out my path there, my responsibilities. I can assure my colleagues, some of my time will be spent on this, being second vice president of the National League of Cities. But luckily, all expenses or a lot of expenses are now going to be picked up by the league, including apparently all my future registrations for as long as I'm a city council member. At any league event, there is no more registration charge that would ever go to the city. The, uh, National League of City will pick, that's like a little perk, I guess, would pick all that up going forward. Uh, all travel expenses, everything like that is, is being borne by the National League of Cities. So I don't yet know how often I have to travel for this job. It, it won't be super extensive, but it'll probably be more than the three meetings a year we might typically go to as a league member. Let's see, I also went to a SAICOC board meeting, a GSEC board meeting. Um, I am now going to be the incoming chair of the JPA for the Connector, Capital Southeast Connector. It's Rancho Cordova's turn and I'm on that board. And unless someone wants to replace me immediately, uh, you could be board chair of that, of that, uh, connector if you so chose, because it's our turn to be chair next year. I also met with the Little League Board last week and talked to them about their project and their sport and where they, where they saw things going in the community. As RCA chair, it's kind of my job to do that. Albert Stricker was kind enough to come along with me and talk to them about the project. So we sort of updated them and heard from them what their, what their interest were with regard to remodeling the site and also talking about other potential partnerships. So Albert, I think, has got a little bit of work to do there, uh, on their behalf, and the league's got a little bit of work to do on their side. And we'll see, uh, what other opportunities we might be able to find for them going forward. In addition to or in substitution for the ongoing process where we're trying to negotiate with the Park District and the School District and the Little League for the project we're, uh, we're willing to fund. The Mills District Residents, now I just said Mills District, that's probably not the proper name. I met with them as well last week and, um, I heard tonight, you know, a comment about the name change. My guess is that, I'm not sure we even know what the name change, or what the name, ultimate name is going to be. It's probably going to be some sort of a marketing, uh, like name. It may be developed in the next year or so, what the final project would be called. But it would be good if we could agree to something on our end. Um, Mill Center, Mills Districts, Mills something, um, Civic Center included or not included, whatever the, whatever the case may be. But I think it would be good to be, be standard on that at some point. And while I'm on this topic, you know, we had a lot of comments here tonight, um, on that topic. And last, last meeting, I did make comments about the anonymous emails. And at the time, I believed them to be anonymous because the way my email software looks, I'm on a Mac. Uh, it takes a couple of clicks to get to where that address is. And when you finally see it, I had no idea it was even there last time. When you finally see it, it's at the end of a list. Because all those emails, I think, are being sent to several people. And at the end of that list actually is the sender's email. So I have to apologize to the public and the members of the, of the public who are in the audience tonight for saying that that was not the case because that email actually was there. I didn't know it was there. I don't know if my colleagues knew it was there. I don't know if all the staff knew it was there. Some of them apparently did, but I didn't. And so I apologize for, for making those remarks. I think it's really important to maintain comedy, uh, not comedy, comity, in how we, how we interact with each other. And that was perhaps lost, but that was the, the point of my comments last week. You know, if we can't get along and talk constructively and fairly with each other, then we've lost something that's made Rancho Cordova special. And I'm not willing to give that up. That's why we're all sitting here in this city, because we were able to, to work together. That's why I've been so successful with cities so far, because we found ways to work together on challenging topics or even routine topics. And I want to be sure that sense of community and partnership continues going forward. So with regard to, you know, things being open, both sides listening, we've got to put energy into that and, and rebuild some trust on those fronts. So I, for one, on this end, am, uh, am signed up for that. Um, and always I try to have, you know, an open door or at least an open phone policy with regard to talking to any constituent who wants to talk to me about something. Let's see, uh, RC SAC, so that's my, the next little project I'll report on. That is, for lack of a better term, kind of the booster club at Cordova High. And I've been meeting with them and staff has been meeting with them in the School District and talking about improvements at Cordova High. And it's been an incredibly healthy process. We've identified some really big things that need to be done there, like maybe a gym remodel and a stadium entrance remodel. Um, because things are not terribly functional right now for our students and extracurricular activities and, and just their normal education. Uh, and also a whole bunch of little tiny things, many of which, uh, at least some of which have already been tackled, uh, inside the School District, internal mechanization about how they maintain their property, et cetera. So it's been a really productive discussion between these leaders who are alumni and, and leaders in our community and School District leaders mediated sort of and funded, uh, by the city with our improvements to, uh, sports and other extracurricular supports at, at Cordova. So that process is ongoing. I suspect it will probably be ongoing maybe for a matter of years. I'm not, I'm not sure how long this thing will play out. But it's very, very productive. And I would say that if there are other areas like that of improvement in our community with other entities, other School Districts, the Park Districts, uh, we should be open for that and seek those out. Because these are great opportunities to have a facilitated discussion about things where ordinarily a single resident or a single agency or representative of an agency may not be able to get something done. But through this facilitated focus, they can. And so we're seeing, we're seeing cool things happen. And I hope that group comes to the city council and reports on those at some point. I was able to participate in the closing ceremony for the Sacramento, um, Siri, you're going to have to help me with pronunciation if I mess this up, but it looks like Suwadewali? Suwadewali? I'm not sure.
Seabody Valley?
Yes, Suwadewali. They did a regional food drive, basically, eh, as a part of their, uh, a part of this project this holiday for them. And the Cordova Food Locker was one of the major recipients. And so I wasn't able to be there for the kickoff of it, but I was there for the closing of it. I was able to give some remarks on behalf of, uh, Rancho Cordova and thanks for their good work. I think that partnership appears to be really strong between our local food bank and that organization. And it appears like they will continue again next year to do so. So clearly, our food bank is a star among food banks, uh, our Cordova Food Locker. So we are really looking forward to that, uh, growing in the coming year and having that aspect of our community, even from the region, supporting it is really, really nice. I attended the staff appreciation lunch along with, uh, with Linda last Friday, and this was done by Daryl. Daryl, are you in the audience? I think I saw you there. Yes, he's there with his lovely wife. They prepared an amazing meal to thank city staff for, uh, their good work in the community. It was just a, a pure effort of, I would say, citizenship on behalf of, of Daryl and his wife. Um, all we did was provide a room and a bunch of hungry mouths and they fed us all, uh, some very amazing and tasty food. Uh, Cyrus liked it so much, he told Daryl he should just leave all the food right there. And Cyrus would see to its, its future care. But in any case, Daryl, thank you again. Thank you to you and your wife for doing that. Really amazing that, uh, that you stepped up that way and did that. It's pretty much unprecedented in our nearly 20-year history. And finally, I just wanted to thank the mayor and the vice mayor for a, a good year last year, a great year, under some very challenging circumstances. You know, I had, uh, I had these duties. Uh, when this pandemic began, you just got to continue, continue the pandemic. So, um, I think we've, we've got some similar experiences there. And hopefully, our next leadership, Donald, will get us out of this pandemic. So that's on you, buddy. Get us, uh, get us out from under this thing. Uh, I'll give you all the scientific support you need. All right, with that, I just want to thank you for my, uh, for listening to my long comments.
Thank you, David. And I, Linda, I'm sorry I went out of order. Still getting used to chairing these meetings, but I should have called on David first. My, my apologies. Um, I want to start.
I am not.
Thanks, sorry about that. Um, yeah, I want to start with a comment that David made as well. Um, and Angel, thank you for showing us these examples of the emails. Um, I'm, I'm going to speak for myself. I haven't signed into my city council email on anything other than an iPhone or an iPad in probably five years. And the only way that you'll see it, it truncates it and just says that there's nine people that were, it was sent to. And so unless you know to go there, um, I didn't see it. And so my comments last time were that if you hit reply, it goes back to the mass email and it doesn't show us any other options. So I appreciate you sharing that because it's not real, it's not readily evident to anybody. Um, not to mention that probably the first month that those emails were coming in, they were going to my spam filter. Um, and so there's a lot of things that just get taken out because it's a public email address and things just get dumped into there. So I will go back and take a, a closer look, but I appreciate you letting us know. But my comments were, were specifically that you can't hit reply except to go to that email, but it is in there. You'd have to hit reply all and remove everybody else. But I appreciate you showing me. Um, with that, okay, so we had our county two by two. Um, the memberships of that are going to likely change. Uh, Sue Frost is probably not going to be meeting with us anymore. It'll be, um, Supervisor Desmond and Supervisor Natoli. For those of you who weren't keeping track, um, Rancho Cordova was split into two different county seats. Um, most of the northern part of the city is going to be in the Elk Grove seat. And most, well, everything east of Sunrise is going to be in the third district that is now represented by Rich Desmond. Um, so it'll be moved into the same one with Fair Oaks, um, Carmichael, some other areas around there, the Arden area, I believe, as well. Um, and so the makeup of that's going to be changing as our makeup is changing this year with, uh, Linda and I now moving into mayor and vice mayor. Um, most of the discussion was around that. There was some discussion, and I'm going to let Supervisor Natoli announce when he wants to. Um, but there is some interest in some, uh, additional ARRA money that he may have control of, uh, to be invested in a project within the city, um, which I think we will all welcome. But again, I'll wait to allow him to announce his intentions when he wants to. Um, I attended an STA board meeting. As most of you know, we, we abandoned the passant sales tax for this coming election cycle. Um, but there still is discussion about looking at the abandoned vehicle, uh, fee, which, um, legal counsel has determined needs to go to the ballot. The unfortunate part about that is that fee is going to expire in 2022. Uh, we are the, by far, the largest user or, or, uh, payment submitter for that. Because essentially what we have to do is tow abandoned vehicles and then we can submit our receipts and we get a share of, of the amount that's there. But we, we normally submit four or five times the amount that we actually get because we're only entitled to a certain amount of money. Um, but the problem is that that's a vehicle license fee that has been determined to be a tax, therefore it has to go on the ballot. Um, the polling looks split if we were to put it on the ballot, if the, if the entity was to put it on the ballot, which would take, just like the, the tax measures that we've, that we've looked at, all jurisdictions would have to weigh in. And essentially, if the city of Sacramento doesn't play ball, um, it really can't go on the ballot. Um, there's also been, um, some movement around a citizen committee, which I think at the STA board, I, they got a little misunderstood that STA wouldn't really have any control over what a citizen committee was, would put together. And there, there is kind of a grassroots group of people that are getting together to look at putting some sort of sales tax on the ballot in 2022. That would be a general sales tax that would only 50 plus one to pass. Um, again, that wouldn't go through any government entity to get approved and to be put on the ballot. Um, but there has been discussion about including that abandoned vehicle fee in that mechanism if they do it. But again, that wouldn't come before any government entity. That's something that they would decide to go collect signatures and do themselves. Um, I pinch-hitted at the connector as David so readily, uh, commented that he is the incoming chair at the next, for, next year for the connector. Um, but a representative, the state director for Senator Padilla was in town and he actually lives in town. But he came out to the connector to meet with the board and, and understand a little bit more about the project and, um, the reliance on federal funding that it has. Um, and I, I pinch-hitted for David who was out of town. Um, but it was, it was an excellent meeting and, and I learned a lot about that project because I have never visited, I've never actually served on that. I think I've always been an alternate. Um, but it was representatives from Folsom, uh, Elk Grove and, and myself were there. Um, let's see. I know I shared with you just a couple of months, not let, not even two months ago, we had our virtual cap to cap. Uh, we actually had our first steering committee for next year last week. Um, so it's starting already. Again, the intention is, is in April, we're going to all go back to DC and things will be normal. Um, we'll see. The, uh, the, the program has started again. And again, I will be chairing the homeless and housing committee, the homeless and affordable housing committee, excuse me. Um, I do want to thank the community, um, council on the Holiday Lights Display. Um, I think I texted Garrett while I was there because I think your sign might have flown away because I couldn't find it. So that might have been one of the signs that ended up in Gold River, um, or over in the, the, uh, the drainage and canal behind it. Um, but no, it was a great event. The kids had a great time. Honestly, I would say, um, it was much more, uh, how can I put it? It was much more orderly, getting people in and out. They were holding cars at a certain spot so that when you went through, you could go through in a timely manner without just being completely shut down. It really was a parking lot last year, in my opinion. And I think it was just, the, the coordination was a lot better. Um, I don't know if there's anything we can do around assisting them and even shutting down one lane of going one way on Folsom Boulevard next year, uh, because the cars are stacking up on Folsom Boulevard. And maybe there's another way that we can do that, that, um, some additional signage or something else that might help them. But still, from year to year, you know, you, you spend a little bit more time in the beginning, sitting there waiting for your turn, but then you went through in a very timely manner and got out. And so, um, I think it worked very, very well. Um, you know, I know last year it was a massive attendance because there was just nothing else on the planet that you were allowed to do but sit in your car and drive around. So, um, you know, I know it, it's probably not as much demand as last year, but you know, that also means that, you know, life was going back to, to normal a little bit too. But still a great event. Um, had an air district meeting. Um, actually, this month was canceled, but I don't think I said this at the last meeting. We are now in the check-before-you-burn, um, phase of the year. So if you're going to, um, have an outdoor bonfire or you're going to put wood in, in your fireplace in your home, please go to check-before-you-burn, burn.com or download the app at sparetheair.com, um, to make sure that you're not breaking the rules. Um, and as cold as it seems to be, surprisingly, this is the worst time for air. Um, you wouldn't believe it because, that, but they don't really take into account the wildfires because we can't control those. Um, Linda, I'm jealous. Um, I, I, I'm chair of, or board president of the Children's Museum and nobody's asked me to come and read to kids. So hopefully, somebody, somebody will watch. So hopefully, somebody somebody will watch this 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 video, and maybe I'll get an invite in the new year.
Well, I'll tell you what, Donald. Um, I asked Erin if anybody had read Twisted Night Before Christmas.
That's awesome.
And she said no, and I said, well, I could do that. And the cool thing is, I mean, everybody knows it. I mean, I could I could sit here and tell you, I could sit here and recite the thing by heart. So I've got this pop-up book, and so it's ea it will be easy to turn it around so that the kids see all the pictures and simply tell them the the story that goes with it at the same time. So I got the easy job.
No, no, it's great. Uh, yeah, that's an interesting board chair to to have, I will say. For those of you who got tickets or tried to get tickets to a Polar Express, there are a lot of people that think this museum puts that on. And some rumors got around that I was now the board chair of the Children's Museum, and I got a handful of requests to help people get tickets after it sold out, which no one on this planet can do anything about getting tickets for people to Polar Express after it's been sold out. But it was really interesting that, you know, only a few weeks into being the board president over at the Children's Museum, that that people start hitting you up for things like that. But yeah, I started getting these requests saying, hey, can you help me get these tickets? And like, yeah, they don't put that on. That's the railroad museum.
Um, Donald, Donald, maybe we need to talk but to talk to the um live steamers about partnering with a local Polar Express.
That'd be cool. I I can tell you that that's a that's a licensed thing that's only at certain railroads throughout the country, and I I I don't know how exactly it works, but because the whole experience and everything, like you you pay to have it. I I know I.
Oh, yeah.
Back in back in the day when I was at one of my other jobs, um I helped some people get on that board at different times and um. But just the cost to get to do that for whatever museum, the 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 licensing and franchisee fees or whatever um are are not insignificant. Plus, you know, they lost what, four days because the power being out down there? So, yeah.
I think ours could be like the North Pole Express or something, right? The North Pole Express right here in Retro Grove.
The the number one requirement, of course, is that you have a railroad. And so they do have a railroad downtown, but so do we. It just happens to be smaller. But of course, they do their Santa trains, but um.
Hey, get kids in pajamas, hot chocolate and cookies. I mean, the only the only thing that we're missing would be the book and that story. So you could do some other cool stuff, something to think about. But yeah, um, it it was interesting, the the misunderstanding of who actually runs uh that event was was interesting. Um, the last thing I would say, and I heard this term today, and I want to say it out loud because David threw it on my lap and said, hopefully, we'll end uh the pandemic. But um, I want to say it was on NPR this morning, but they they described the phase that we're moving into. And there clearly is going to be a spike coming, and it's hit a lot of parts of the country. But they described it as an endemic, that we're moving into the we're moving from a pandemic into an endemic where this is going to be with us every cold and flu season. But with proper vaccines and proper treatments, we're going to survive this each year, right? And if people are vaccinated, they're going to get this. The sad thing is that we're going to see as as many cases as we did last year when we had no vaccines. And most of the people that are going to end up in the hospital and that are going to die are going to be because they chose not to get vaccinated. And that's a really, really unfortunate thing. And so I hope and I hope as we move into this next phase, that people realize the danger that they're going to be in if they're unvaccinated and that they make the right choices, especially this holiday season.
So Donald, let's can we take a minute, please, and and go back to um David and ask uh for the definitions between pandemic and endemic?
I I just heard that term today, and so I'm I'm really hoping that that's that's a reality, and maybe even that's a real word.
Well, a lot of us have thought that this would just become like everybody get their flu shot every fall. So David, what's the difference?
So pandemic is just a disease that is spreading out of control basically all over the world. It's pandemic, worldwide pandemic. Um, endemic means it's a disease that we sort of live with. It's always here and around, and we kind of get it. So influenza is a good example of that. Chickenpox would be an example of that. They're endemic. You may or may not be able to do something about, you know, catching that disease or that virus in an endemic. But um, it's just around. The problem is this, it's kind of political, kind of public health wise. There's no formula for when something becomes endemic. It's when society accepts it as being endemic, then it's endemic. So um, like Linda, the point you just made about maybe we get an annual vaccine, maybe we do, maybe we don't. That that sort of remains to be to be seen. But at some point, we're going to say this is endemic. Now, if you listen to virologists and public health people talk about this, generally, we're saying, you know, when the level of deaths is lower than what we'd see every year in influenza typically, maybe that's kind of like the level of of this is endemic. But what's most likely to happen with SARS-CoV-2, the virus that causes COVID-19, what's likely to happen with that is that it becomes our fifth common cold virus. So we have four other coronaviruses out there that we've known about before that cause common colds. This is this could be the fifth one. And so what would happen is, without as many people infected, because eventually everyone's going to be infected by this. Uh, even those of us who have had vaccines will probably get minor, mostly asymptomatic, no symptoms sort of infections. We're all going to get infected by this. We're going to get ongoing infections by it. But eventually, that will get all the way through the population, and then uh the people who haven't had it will only be kids. Kids really don't get terribly sick from this. The the odds are way, way, way in their favor. And it becomes sort of like the other coronaviruses, where you get it as a kid, and then you might get it later in life, but it's not so bad. And, you know, sure, maybe those coronaviruses, when you're very advanced in age and you've got maybe a limited immune system or or a special condition like that, they could be very serious for you. But that's likely the future of of SARS-CoV-2, the virus that causes COVID-19. It becomes our fifth common cold virus, for for lack of sort of a better explanation. And at that point, it might still mutate, but with fewer people getting it and fewer variants being produced. Each time you get it would kind of be like a vaccine. So we may not even need a a vaccine for it. Flu is a little different. It has a process of of large mutations that goes on every year. Uh, fascinating story that I won't tell you here, but if you want to hear it, just email me or call me or something, and I'll and I'll share it. Flu is different. It does massive changes and re rehabilitates itself every year, changes itself up. Coronaviruses don't do that. So that that's, I think, my best guess, and I think probably science is the best guess right now about what happens. This becomes a cold virus, and at some point, we decide, well, that's an endemic level of the cold virus, and we can move on.
Interesting.
Thank you. Well, I don't have any more science, so I'll move on to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I think every all the major events that I was also able to attend have been mentioned. But I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank uh many community and many staff members who helped with the Power Run, with the ITLV Parade, with the City Star, with the with Christmas in Cordova, uh great, successful events. And this would not have been, none of these events would have been possible without the generous and kind commitment of time and uh and and toys and resources of the of different partners, especially uh our police officers, our city staff. So I'm really grateful for for the work they do at this time of the year. Um, I also wanted to point out that I attended the um the Chamber of Commerce, or the Ranch Cordova Chamber of Commerce uh uh open house event last week. Uh, great event, a great turnout, and seeing that Chamber of Commerce thriving is really a great testimony of uh the partnership that we have developed with uh with with them in making sure that our business community is is successful as well. I also attended one of our police officers, Greg Saunders, um who has been with this community for a long time and has worked with our police department retired. And I attended um his retirement ceremony last week and uh provided him with uh with a token of appreciation from from the city staff and from the police department. Uh, the the other meeting, I also had um a a great visit with Jay King, who is the president and CEO of the California Black Chamber of Commerce. Uh, good discussion, great meeting. We talked ways that we could, um, first of all, he's very impressed with the with the work the city has done, the the work that we've been doing as in the last eighteen, nineteen years. And we talked a lot about ways that we could be uh better partners and and work with them on various projects and activities. So that was a uh that was an introductory meeting that I had with him, and I and I hope to follow up with additional discussions and meetings. And lastly, I wanted to also point out to um thank the mayor, vice mayor for uh thank you for uh for your leadership. And thank you for uh for allowing me to work with you. And and uh these are, as mentioned by other council members, these are really difficult, challenging times. And I have been in um both private and public sector, and I don't recall seeing any anything like this before in the way of how difficult it is in conducting business or doing business. And and also wanted to point out, uh council member Sander mentioned about the the city staff appreciation luncheon. Mary Lou and Darla Langwell generously um offered to host an entire city hall to delicious homemade meal. And we thank you. This is a very kind and generous um gesture, and we truly enjoyed it. We appreciated this uh this uh this beautiful, kind gesture. And um city staff have assigned some cards and some swag bag that we have prepared for you, the and Mary Lou and and Daryl, that I will give to you at the end of the meeting. But I just wanted to uh um tell you how meaningful it is at a time when this world needs more more kindness. So so thank you for doing that. And that's all I have, Mr. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Cyrus. So with that, we'll move on to a page break. Uh, consent uh calendar items, consent calendar items, uh consist of matters deemed routine and non-controversial by staff unless a member of the council wishes to pull an item for individual consideration. All items will be approved by one motion. I know we need to pull 11.6. Is there anything else on the calendar that any member would like to pull?
Number five, just for a simple question.
11.5 and 11.6. Do we have any public comment on the calendar?
Uh, for 11.1, we do.
So 11.1, we have a comment. Any other comments on the calendar?
Um, I don't have any others.
Okay, so I have, uh, let's see, I will entertain a motion for uh moving 11.2, 3, and 4.
Move approval of uh actually move approval of the balance of the calendar with the exception of 11.1, 11.5, and 11.6.
Okay, you said the same thing, but go ahead. Uh, can I get a second? Okay, roll call, please.
Was the second council member.
Gatewood.
Gatewood, thank you. Uh, council member Gatewood.
Aye.
Council member Pulapati.
Yes.
Council member Sander.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Budge.
Yes.
Mayor Terry.
Aye. Okay, let's take the comment for 11.1.
11.1 is Angel Ball.
Hello, my name is Angel Ball. The minutes recorded.
Just a second. Angel, hang on, your 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 mic's not on.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
I don't want to trip. Um, my name is Angel Ball. The minutes recorded for item 19 dot three are not correct. Item 19 dot three, which I was present for, I heard a motion, a second, and voting begin. Then council member Sander had an amendment, discussion was held, and then the city manager stepped in and instructed staff and council to start the voting process over. It was very confusing. A motion was made, but not really, sort of, and then there was amendment and second, and then a vote was complete. Your motion was not clear during the meeting and is not recorded in the minutes. The recorded minutes do not reflect the actions taken. I request the minutes be corrected to reflect the action that took place. Thank you.
Do we have any other public comments on that item?
We do not.
I'll entertain a motion.
Um, we would probably all need to go back and and review uh that particular item in order to understand the gist of the comment.
Would you like to move, would you like to move to continue the item?
I would continue the item to our next meeting.
Is that a motion, Linda?
Yes, please.
Okay, do we have a second?
I second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Council member Pulapati.
Yes.
Council member Gatewood.
Yep.
Council member Sander.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Budge.
Yes.
Mayor Terry.
Aye. Uh, we'll move to 11.5. David, you had a question? Actually, do we have a public comment on 11.5, correct?
We do not have any public.
Sorry, go ahead, David.
It's a simple question. Is Albert in the room, or perhaps Cyrus can can answer it?
Albert is in.
It appears we're discarding our, it appears we're discarding our previous bids and reopening this, and I'm just curious as to as to why we're we're pursuing that.
Good evening, Councilmember Sander. Albert Stricker with the Public Works Department. The reason is that we identified, we wanted to include additional scope in the in the contract. Um, specifically additional striping services that were not in the original bid. So we are um rejecting the bids and modifying the scope to better represent the city that the city needs.
I was worried it might be inflationary pressures on materials and bids being way beyond range, and we had to change the scope down. But um if that's not the case, that's uh that's good. It's always good to be willing to say, you know what, we could have done that better and and find a way to do that. So I appreciate that.
Thank you.
And with that, I'll move you, Adam.
I have a motion. I have a mo I have a motion by Sander, a second by Pulapati. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Sander.
Second was by Linda.
Was it Linda? Okay.
Yeah.
Councilmember Sander.
Aye.
Councilmember Pulapati.
Yes.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Budge.
Yes.
Mayor Terry.
Aye. Okay, uh, we'll have Councilmember Gatewood uh step out.
Yep, I'm going to go ahead and recuse myself. I do business with this company, and so I can't be around for the vote. Thank you.
Don't go far. Do we have any public comment for this item?
We do not.
Give me justice at council. Okay, with that, I'll I'll entertain a motion.
I so moved.
Second.
Move by Budge, second by Sander. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Sander.
Aye.
Councilmember Pulapati.
Yes.
Councilmember Gatewood is recusing himself. Vice Mayor Budge.
Yes.
Mayor Terry, uh, Gate, uh, Mayor Terry.
Aye. It's been four years. It's all right. I'm out of practice.
It's very hard to get your mind around that, yeah.
Darn it. See, this is what happens when when you have the new guy become mayor. We have more of the agenda on the next page. So 11.7 through 11.12, do we have any public comments on any of those?
We do not.
Okay.
Um, actually, but my my motion moved the uh
Ah, you're right. Yep, we're done.
Was the balance of the calendar with the exception of those three items, so we're cool.
I'm used to having a PDF in front of me. This is a lot, this is a lot different. Okay, thank you. Uh, okay, uh, let's get Garrett back in the room. Hopefully, he can hear my voice. Well, with that, I'm going to just read the consent public hearing uh statement. Consent public hearing items consist of matters deemed routine and non-controversial by staff unless a member of the council wishes to pull an item for individual consideration. All items will be approved by one motion. Uh, first, do we have any public comments on this calendar?
The city clerk's office has not received any public comment. There are no hands raised in Zoom or by telephone.
Thank you. Um, council, uh, any of these that need to be pulled? Hearing none. I'll entertain a motion.
I move.
Moved by Sander, second by Gatewood. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Yes.
Councilmember Sander.
Aye.
Councilmember Pulapati.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Budge.
Yes.
Mayor Terry.
Aye. Okay, with that, we're moving on to our public hearing items. Okay, with that, we're moving on to our public hearing items. Uh, clerk, will you please read in thirteen point one?
The subject is thirteen point one, an ordinance amending title twenty-three, zoning code, Article One Administration, Article Three Zoning District, allowable uses and general development standards, Article Seven Site Planning and Development Standards, Article Nine Specific Use Provisions and Article Eleven Definitions of the City of Rancho Cordova Municipal Code and Discussion and Direction on Potential Municipal Code Amendments Related to Tasting Rooms and Electric Vehicle Charging Stations.
Darcy, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor Terry, members of the council. Darcy Galart with the Planning Department. I am joined this evening with Stefan Heisler, the Housing Manager. We're gonna go through a few municipal code amendments. Some of these the council has previously seen and we've discussed. This is just the formality of adopting these into the code. There are also, also a couple new amendments we're presenting and then we have a couple discussion and direction items. So for tonight, we're asking.
Darcy, hang on for one second, I'm getting, is that feedback in the room or is that on Zoom?
I don't know the answer to that, Persephone.
I think there's somebody on the phone that's talking.
Can you, can you all tell who, who's coming up? Cause it just, can we, can we?
I get a phone number that I can see.
Can we pull the presentation down for a sec? That's here. So we're just getting feedback.
Sounds like it was replaying an earlier part of our meeting.
Yeah, it's not coming up anymore. If you're not speaking, can you mute? Go ahead again, Darcy.
So for this evening, while Persephone is pulling up the presentation, staff is requesting council to waive the first reading as well as provide discussion and direction on two specific items we'll be talking about on tasting rooms and electric vehicle charging stations.
Where?
I'm trying to flip this over.
There it is again, it's the same, it's replaying an earlier part of our meeting in the background.
It's Donald swearing in video that's playing right now and it stopped.
Yeah, it's really faint here, but I, I could hear it. Are we good? Okay. Third time's a charm.
Okay, here we go. Waive the first reading, introduce the ordinance for various amendments to Title Twenty-three and then provide staff with potential amendments related to tasting rooms and electric vehicle charging stations. My slide's not advancing, Persephone. There we go. So with that, I'm gonna turn this slide over to Stefan to present.
Good evening, Mayor and council, Stefan Heisler, Housing Manager for the City of Rancho Cordova. I'll be going through just a few of the state law changes and code amendments that we're making to comply with those state law changes. So the first one is a small change to our reasonable accommodation section, minor adjustments to comply with state laws mainly around privacy, security and making it easier for people to make those requests. Uh, next is changes to our agricultural zoning districts. It, we do actually have a couple agricultural zoning districts in the city, uh, so to comply with state law, we do have to allow and permit farm worker housing in those zones. Uh, the next one, the next changes had to do with the residential zoning districts, mixed use zoning districts and commercial and industrial zoning districts. These changes are to comply with state law, recent state law changes mainly AB twenty-one sixty-two for supportive housing and AB one oh one for low barrier navigation uses to, to permit these, these uses within residential and some mixed use categories. Um, these are the minimums to comply with the state law. We do have the option, of course, to go beyond to permit these in, in additional locations if, if the council so decided, uh, so directed, and, uh, we're open to some of that direction except if council so chooses, but, uh, these changes here that are recommended tonight are the changes needed to comply with the state law. Uh, the residential uses changes, uh, to clean up, just the cleanup of the ADU or accessory dwelling unit and junior ADU sections and to also incorporate design standards for farm worker housing, uh, should that ever be proposed in the city. And then also to incorporate land use definitions that will, uh, follow these other changes as well, uh, mainly for farm worker housing, low barrier navigation centers and cleaning up definitions for target populations and transitional housing. And with that, I'll, I'll turn it back to you, Darcy.
So the next set of proposed changes we have is to the parking section. Um, these presented, these changes were presented at an August twenty-fourth work session with council. I won't go through all of these, but some of the highlights, um, were to provide various changes to reflect industry standards. Additionally, providing tandem parking for apartments and condominiums, allowing an increase of parking for some of our users, um, in our office and business section as well as manufacturing as sometimes they require a higher demand and the code currently doesn't allow them to go up to the standards that they generally like to see. Um, additionally, adding a section into the code about electric vehicle parking spaces, um, and that has been added into the code. Uh, additionally, accessible parking spaces was a topic of conversation, um, and what we're providing right now, um, falls under the health and safety code, so, um, the changes that are in the code are limited to what we're allowed to do as a city. Um, we can explore increasing that, but at this time, we're sticking with the allowable under the health and safety code. Commercial real estate signs, and we have discussed this a few times, um, we've done some broker outreach and the language on the screen before you has been vetted through the brokerage community, um, and this is what, um, we have, we have shown this to you and this is what we've come back with for final adoption. Um, so basically what we're proposing is that the for lease or sell signs can be displayed for a period while the unit, building or property is being marketed for sale or lease and must come down thirty days after it is sold or leased.
Can I ask a question there?
Yes.
How are we gonna police that? How, like, what's the enforcement for that? Are we relying on the property owner or somebody that's leasing it to call and complain? Or are we gonna run around and ask everybody if they've sold their property?
It will mainly be complaint driven, um, and there's various ways that we can look to see if a property is being, um, sold for lease or sale, um, and we would work with code and economic development to work through that process and contacting our brokerage community. Um, they, Amanda could possibly speak more to that, but they're very open and receptive to, um, us picking up the phone and verbally communicating with them. So this isn't gonna be something that, um, unless directed by council, we will be actively driving around and enforcing. It will be more complaint driven. The next section of the code would be definitions and these are to add in definitions, uh, based upon some changes that Stefan went over, um, as well as modifying some of our personal service definition to add in, um, just routine services that are offered such as microblading, which right now would fall under like a tattoo service versus permanent makeup. So these are just some of our modified definitions we're proposing. With that, I will turn it back over to Stefan to talk about the, is there a question?
Oh, yeah, I have a, a question. What is a junior ADU?
A junior ADU is just a smaller size accessory dwelling unit. Um, so a junior ADU doesn't necessarily have to have, um, a cooking facility, so it's a much smaller unit, has different height and setback requirements, so, um, generally...
And it's, so it would be less than a thousand square feet?
Oh yes, for sure.
So then I have a comment about, um, Donald's questions about, uh, who, uh, the enforcement and the commercial signage. Um, at the, at the same time that we discussed this earlier this year, which, which might have been August, we know that the Barco Building was sold because it said so in the Business Journal and a couple of other, uh, business publications, but the sign stayed up. And that was the one, that was one of the ones I used as an example during that discussion of a building that had been sold, but the sign stood up on the corner for six months following that. Well, following our discussion at the council, the broker called me and he said that yes, the property had been sold, but it was immediately put back up for sale by the, whoever it was that bought it. And that sign is still there today, a year later. So that's a way to skirt around what we're trying to accomplish here, and I don't have a good solution for it because the building is technically not, still not occupied and for sale.
Amanda, I think you had a comment?
Sure. Good evening, everyone. I'm Amanda Norton, the Economic Development Manager for the city. To councilwoman Budge's commentary, that building is also for lease right now. There is currently not a tenant in it and that is why there is a sign still up because they do not have an active tenant for that building.
But, but I, I think staff's answer to my question, which, again, my concern would be kinda what Linda just described. We read something in the Business Journal and we run out to cite a building that we don't know the story on, but I think the point is that a tenant and owner, I think to David's point, he had, it wasn't the owner of a building, I wanna say it was a tenant in the building that was like, I've leased this entire damn building and he's still got a sign out there saying that there's space for leasing it, so that when they call, they can say, hey, well, yeah, well, yeah, that's leased, but we got some property over here that we, that we can lease to you. And so the tenant didn't want it, so the tenant would complain, this building's completely leased and this Realtor won't take down the damn sign. So I think, I think that's a good solution. Again, my concern would be just what Linda said was, you know, the Barco Building got sold and we read it in the Business Journal, so somebody should go and tell them to take a sign down. Well, no, it's been for sale and for leased the entire time since then, so we wouldn't have done anything.
And one of the, the challenge we're always going to face in anything in regards to signs is to, one of the points that you alluded to, Mr. Mayor, is that a lot of these buildings are multi-tenanted buildings. So generally, there is usually some tenant that's either gonna be coming in, coming out, and there's gonna always kinda be a flux through those. Um, we've been working really closely with our brokerage community and they're like, hey, let us know if the signs are in disrepair, if it is sitting out there, things do get forgotten, it happens, we're human, um, just pick up the phone and they'll call and let us know what's going on. So we, the whole idea is that if there are signs remaining, they're always in good repair and that they're always either for lease and/or for sale.
So I have another, uh, point to bring up, um, and I know I seem overly focused on it, but this is my world. I live here in our business district, yeah, I don't go anywhere that I don't drive through all these signs. And, you know, David's original comment months ago, a year ago, was that it looks like everything in Rancho Cordova is for sale. So there are two property owners who have created their own solutions. One of them is Ethan Conrad. On all the buildings or shopping centers or whatever that he owns, he puts up, um, yellow panels in every available, um, group signage, monument signage panel that says, you know, call, uh, I should be able, uh, something seven thousand, uh, seven seven nine seven thousand, something like that. Okay. So if those signs are already up in the monument sign or the address identification signs for a building, then there shouldn't be any need for duplication of signs along the frontage of that property. That's from my perspective. The other property owner we have, uh, that does a version of that is Palmer West with all the buildings that they purchased on White Rock. They have perfectly beautiful little monument signs that say how much square footage they have for sale and who to call, but then, oh, by the way, the broker also puts up a sign which clutters up the landscaping. So it just seems to me that if you've already got a very, a very nice, um, owner advertising his own properties, that a variety of brokers should not be putting up duplicate signs.
So I'd like to. Thank you. Councilwoman Budge, to that point, actually the signage within the monument sign would not be allowed, and Darcy will correct me if I'm wrong, under our current ordinance, so those will actually be asked to be removed. And the signage that is up on the street with probably the broker's information on it would be allowed under the specific parameters under this. To be totally honest, a lot of our brokers didn't even realize we had a sign ordinance until very recently. So for some of them, this came as a shock because they didn't know it existed.
Well, gee whiz. So it just strikes me that the, that the goal here, um, would be to eliminate the, um, aggressive duplication of for sale signs.
We agree and we'll be making a bigger effort out to everyone now that we have the new, if, if council decides to approve this language, this will, the language will be alerting, um, all of our folks to if they haven't already seen the information.
Do we really think that the way that this is being revised gives you a specific tool to do that?
We believe once everyone knew that the signage had to come in, down within a particular window and were alerted that there were sign issues, um, and that we had a concern with them, almost every broker I spoke to was like, hey Amanda, we didn't even know this was out here, we're glad to be, we're glad to help in any way that we can. So I do believe for those spaces where something did get left out, this would be a moment for us to be able to get some of those to be taken down.
That would be nice. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
It just, the, the, the whole goal is to, is for the world to know how prosperous we really are, but to certainly enable building owners to select their empty spaces.
Yeah, I agree. We certainly do not wanna inhibit that. We don't wanna inhibit normal business activity, but we also wanna be sure that what's perceived as normal business activity doesn't actually damage us because its impact is not normal. Um, so people drive through Rancho Cordova and they see signs on every building, they think, wow, this, this used to be a place where people worked, but no more because everything's vacant.
Well, in reality, the opposite, the opposite is.
Exactly, exactly. That's, that's a conundrum.
Every, every parking lot, uh, around us here in Cat Village is, um, almost every day or every week, there are more and more automobiles where people are returning to work. It's certainly not what it was before because nowhere is in this country, but, but every day there are more and more people returning to work.
And our vacancy rate is, is getting kinda low for the, you know, for the zone we wanna be in, of a job center of this size. It's never gonna be zero, that would be a total crisis, you probably want it to be around ten percent.
It would.
Something like that. Uh, we're at zero for industrial, that is a bit of a crisis right now, um, but that would, that would just be normal for us. But, you know, a seven percent normal rate should not result in a sign on every single property because those sign owners, those property owners are then kinda shooting themselves in the foot based on the feedback I've gotten.
Right. So Amanda probably knows what a healthy, um, office vacancy rate is and I have a sneaky feeling it's five percent, but I don't know that.
Usually under five means you're having people build more of it and, like to David's point, how many million square feet of industrial are we looking at in like Rio de Janeiro right now? Because it's under five. So that's, that, above five and prices are going down, below five and you're building more of it. Um, so I think at, at this point, cause we've, we've talked about this in multiple meetings, at some point you adopt something and then revisit to see if it worked. Um, I know.
Right.
One of my frustrations for years was, you know, we kept adopting these, these awesome smoking ordinance, but then we would talk to, to folks, it's like, well, what did we do with that? Did we actually go out and enforce it? And it turned out PD was actually using that, um, as a mechanism in like parks to stop people from smoking and, and to, you know, check for priors and things like that, so I don't know, or for warrants. Um, and so, you know, there, there are ways that these things can work, but I think at a certain point, you adopt it and if in six to twelve months, we still have all the, the stinking signs, then yeah, we gotta try something else. But we've been talking about this for over a year about doing something. So I, my two cents would be, give this a shot and if it doesn't work, then, then we ratchet up and do something else.
With that, I'm gonna turn this next slide back over to Stefan to talk about electric vehicle.
With that, I'm going to turn this next slide back over to Stefan to talk about electric vehicle charging stations, which was something brought up, I believe, at the end of the last council meeting to bring back for a quick discussion.
Thanks, Darcy. Stefan, go ahead.
So for a quick review, this item was presented in September, but I'll just quickly go through it again. So this, this is a change to comply again with the Cal Green State Code Updates regarding electric vehicle capable parking. So this amendment will change or will add electrical veh, electric vehicle parking and add an, add a reference to the Cal Green requirements and standards and state building codes. We're not going to copy and paste the current code into, current state code into our municipal code because that would require us to continue updating it as there were state changes. So it's just going to be a reference, but that, that new code does require EV capable parking spaces for both residential and non-residential projects. It applies to new construction and certain additions or modifications, mainly, I believe, if you're adding a number of parking spaces to your project or existing sites. And also zoning code clarifies when EV spaces are reviewed, locations for EV spaces and allowed exemptions for technical infusibility. The main infusibility would be no power or insufficient power supply. And then also bringing this back for discussion for any kind of additional direction from council regarding specific to gas stations or other uses or regarding, you know, any, any direction regarding, you know, additional EV capable spaces versus the minimum or installation of electrical chargers. And here you can see the two tables that would apply to multifamily dwellings as well as non-residential.
So I have a question, Stefan. Is Cal Green the old Title 24?
Correct.
Okay. So that's basically for everybody, that's basically our energy code that mandates the kinds of windows we install in houses, the kinds of insulation that we apply to buildings, that sort of thing. The percentage of glazed areas to solid walls, a lot of stuff like that. So, um, it was my impression, seriously going back to about 1991, that Title 24 required that there be in every single family home a, the capability of adding an electrical vehicle charger. And so certainly all the houses that were built from like 2000 on have the ability to install an electrical vehicle charger. But what's important to understand is that you may have a box on the wall that connects to a conduit that ultimately leads to your, um, your electrical panel, but you are then going to pay $1,100 or $1,200 to have the appropriate electrician come out and install your NEMA 14 or whatever your specific automobile requires. So being, uh, being capable doesn't, doesn't necessarily get you a lot. My focus in asking that we discuss this, and I would completely agree, to begin with, I would completely agree that certainly multifamily dwellings or non-residential capable spaces should, that the, that the number should be increased. Because I could be wrong, but as far as I know, like for, for BDX, there's like three or four EV spaces on the Town Center Drive, but I don't know that whether there are others on the inside. And as I said, because of the cost of these things, if you live in an apartment and you have an assigned parking space, you're for sure not going to go out and hire an electrician to add an $1,100 or $1,200 asset to their property just so you can charge your electric car. So my focus in bringing this forward has simply magnified over the last six months to a year. Everybody will provide an, an EV charger. The ones at Kaiser are from Electrify America. S-Mud has a huge program and is interested in helping us expand our EV chargers here in Rancho Cordova. Tesla will do them for free if you've got a location that you think is marketing for them. There are probably other, other companies. Every automobile company, including Detroit, is building an electrical vehicle. Goodness knows if the, if you read, go back a couple of months and read the article about the new Audi electric vehicle, that automobile has absolutely everything on it and beyond that we have in our 2016 Tesla. It's really a remarkable vehicle. Zoning codes generally euphemistically call gas stations fueling stations. If we add a simple requirement that there should be one EV charger per new gas station or completely remodeled gas station, we would simply be joining the 21st century. It's a goal of the federal government. It's a goal of the state government.
Do we have any more of a presentation?
One more slide.
Okay, let's finish it.
Last discussion item is on tasting rooms and an issue that has been reoccurring. So our existing tasting room regulations will allow a brewery, winery, or distillery to have a tasting room up to 50% of the floor area. This restriction is not imposed on any other use that we have in the city that has seating such as bars, lounges, restaurants, or off-site tasting rooms, which would be just the tasting room itself and the product sold there is manufactured somewhere else. What we have seen is that during COVID, the restrictions that forced everybody outside required us to come up with a temporary outdoor seating process in order to comply with that. What we saw was that all of our manufacturers were able to move their operations outside, keep their businesses open, still adhering to some basic requirements such as ADA parking, circulation, pedestrian access. Now what we're seeing with the restrictions still being in place is that these outdoor areas are keeping these businesses open. They're also becoming very popular with their clientele, and so they're wanting to make these outdoor spaces permanent. But the 50% rule is limiting them from having these spaces be permanent. So what we know is the outdoor space is working. It's keeping our businesses open. But we want to find a way to allow them to keep their indoor and their outdoor seating room area. So we did some research. Other jurisdictions have maximums that are very similar to what we have right now in the code at 50%. However, that's all, you know, pre-COVID, not taking into consideration all these new restrictions. So what staff is suggesting is that we delete the 50% max floor area for tasting rooms. Let the manufacturing space kind of dictate what's needed for that operation. So they have a 1,500 square foot space. They need X number for manufacturing and the rest can be used for a tasting room. Rather than saying your max is 50% because that really is limiting our businesses from being able to expand. It's also starting to become a hurdle for new ones that want to come into the city when they're looking at spaces. So that would be the suggestion that we come back at a later date for an amendment to modify that. And with that, that concludes Steph's presentation. So we are asking that you find the proposed amendments exempt from SEQA, waive the first reading of the ordinance, and provide any other direction that may be needed for these two items we discussed.
Counsel, any other comments?
Um, I have, I have one question for Stefan. Stefan, Darcy and I talked earlier today about the relationship between transitional housing and the, oh, I'm sorry, the service centers. I've lost the phrase.
Well, there's supportive housing and there's low barrier navigation centers.
Yeah. So we talked earlier about the relationship between those two. And she said you could come back with some information about that later and not impact this particular set of amendments.
Sure. Is there any particular question that you have regarding those two?
Well, yeah, specifically, um, um, and I'm sorry, I was sitting in a dentist's office doing this and got the paperwork mixed up. But in either the, um, CGM1, M2, or the OPMU and the, uh, OIPC, that's not correct. There's a, there's a couple of areas where transitional housing is allowed, but these service centers were not allowed. And it would seem to me that if the navigation centers are needed in any area, it would be in an area that permitted transitional housing. So that would be, that would be the, the issue to address later on.
And to be, sorry, to be clear that you're, you're referring to the, the low barrier navigation centers?
Correct.
Okay, okay.
We're just adding a definition to the code, right? We're adding another.
No, no, we're actually adding those to use tables.
Correct. We are adding them as new uses to the use tables.
So there was, from my perspective, there was a contradiction between providing an area where people who might need the navigation center could live and then not permitting the navigation center to be installed next door to where they were living.
I think our, our understanding of that, of the navigation centers is they're, they're more akin to emergency shelters that provide very temporary housing with support services while they are locating permanent housing.
So, and, and I, I truly, I didn't have, I didn't have the definitions. So I, I would be happy to review the definitions that might help me understand why one of them is permitted and one of them is not.
We can, we can come back with maybe some additional options for, for those uses. I think these, these changes are, are what, what are required to comply with the state law. So there, there may appear to be some contradictions, but we, we could come back for future amendment with, with, with a future cleanup of the code to take a look at maybe rectifying some of those contradictions.
Okay.
Okay. So really quick, City Clerk, do we have any comment, public comments on this item?
We do not have any public comment that the City Clerk's office has received for 12.1, 13.1.
Okay. So let me go ahead and open the public hearing. So we have a slide in front of us, but that's not covering everything that we need to give direction on tonight. So we have giving direction on parking standards, commercial real estate signs, tasting rooms. And in my opinion, I, I have no direction to give on electric vehicle charging stations, and I'll explain my position later. But let's start with, is there any direction to give on parking standards or do we agree with staff's recommendation? We can't, we can't just do thumbs up.
I'm good with that.
Okay. I'm fine with the staff's recommendations the way they are. Is there any objections to the direction that staff is recommending or asking for when it comes to parking centers? Is there any thing specific you needed from us on this?
No. So the, the bulk of the presentation tonight was all of the proposed code amendments that the majority of we've shown to council before. This was just the final step to get those actually amended into the code. The only two items we're actually seeking direction on would be the additional conversation on electric vehicle charging stations and then removing the 50% floor area maximum for tasting rooms.
Okay. Cause, cause we did have councilmembers that were trying to, hang on, Linda, hang on. We did have councilmembers that were trying to give some direction on the commercial real estate sign. So I, I suggested that that was a done conversation. I, I don't know if there's two others that would like to agree with me and let this move forward, but I'd like to understand where the council is on that before we just say we weren't looking for direction tonight. So I'm good with moving forward. Garrett is nodding his head in here. Could you audibly do that?
Audibly, that. I'm just joking.
So it's fine. Is there another council member that wants to move forward to staff?
Yeah, I agree with Ms., yeah, I agree with Mayor's recommendation that we should.
Okay, so that's.
So then we need, we need to find the municipal code amendments that we need to find that their environmental documentation is adequate.
Yeah, Linda, we're not ready for that yet. Hang on. Linda, we're not ready for that yet.
I gotta go get my, I'm about to lose my, my laptop. I get it. I'll be back.
Okay. So moving on to the tasting rooms, and we'll wait for Linda to get back with her power cord because I know we're going to have a conversation about charging stations. I'm fine with the staff's recommendation. Whatever helps keep our breweries and distilleries and meteries and wineries and whatever open.
Campoodries.
I, I, I see, I, I can't understand why so many of these communities around this region have been ripping out parklets and all kinds of other things that were adding additional seating for restaurants and businesses like this. And then all of a sudden they want to go back and say, oh, we want our parking back. Like, like we're still in a pandemic, if whether it's an endemic or whatever. Whatever we can do to help these folks stay afloat. And frankly, as somebody who's still fully vaccinated and boosted and everything else, weather permitting, I'd rather sit outside still. And so, and I know there are a lot of people in this city and in this region that would much prefer to do that if weather is agreeable for that. So I'm totally fine with this. Is there anybody that has other direction to give staff on this?
No, I totally agree. I've, I've talked to a lot of the breweries and they really could use this for the indoor space. So anything to keep that community that we got going here because it's a very, very big community that seems to keep growing. And I don't know how they're able to add more breweries and booteries and stuff in the region. But yeah, this is a, this is a good, this is a good ordinance to put in place. So I'm in agreement with the mayor.
So most, yeah, but most of these were written pre-pandemic, not taking into consideration current scenarios. So we have to change and adapt to the time that we are in. So I agree with staff recommendation on this one.
David, Linda, anybody else want to weigh in on the tasting rooms?
No, I, I agree with what Steph said and what some said about my colleagues.
Okay. Okay. So let's move back to the vehicle charging stations at gas stations.
That we can talk about.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. But really, what staff is asking is that we adopt what they propose and then as a separate item, provide direction on tasting rooms and EV chargers.
Okay. So we'll, we'll, we'll take a motion in a minute, but let's, let's just discuss the vehicle charging stations. And then we can be done with the entire item. I said this on more than one occasion that, Linda, I'm sorry, I don't agree with you. I don't believe people want to spend time sitting at gas stations for 20, 30, 40 minutes, an hour to charge their vehicle. They're not going to use these. We need to have vehicle charging stations in places where people want to get out of their car and spend time out of their car doing another activity. These need to be at restaurants. They need to be at home. Linda, excuse me. Thank you. Every study I've ever seen, every study I've ever seen has said that people want these in places where they're going to spend enough time to actually charge their car. So I, I will readily admit that we probably shouldn't be building gas stations anywhere in this city because based on, on the state's timeline, we're going to have a whole bunch of brownfields at every one of our major intersections in this city that we're going to have to figure out what to do with. I don't think adding high voltage lines in the ground is helping us in any, any way deal with that, with that coming problem. But I would not be in favor of any ordinance that forced vehicle charging stations at gas stations. I, 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 I know in five years or even less than that, that people will drive right by these to go to somewhere else. If it's, even if it's at the Starbucks or it's at Chili's or it's at their work or it's at their gym or it's at their apartment, they're going to use those over the gas stations. Gas stations.
So if you think about every gas station that has been built in the la, in, in the last 10 years here in Rancho Cordova, it was either adjacent to a grocery store or to a Starbucks or to fast food and a supercharger takes 20 minutes.
Anybody else have any other input? Linda, Linda, we've heard you on this one. Thank you.
We're not building your standalone gas station.
Thank you, Linda. Is there any other comments from council?
Yeah, I think the market is going to dictate where these go. I'm always. Yeah, I think the market is gonna dictate where these go. I'm always loathe to sort of cross that. I think if groceries find out this is a benefit, they would be apt to want to put them in. Uh, as for any other, you know, um, any other entity that's in the retail business, um, and perhaps the city, given, given the right conditions. So I'm sort of loathe to say that this is the solution at this point because I think we're in the very early days of how this plays out over time.
Rayleigh has two.
I, I would agree that I, I wouldn't want to force the hand. I wouldn't want to stop a gas station if they felt that they could make this work, then go ahead. I don't want to stop them, but I don't want to force them because I, I just, I don't think they're going to be used. But that's my opinion. Garrett, I think you had a comment?
Yeah, uh, I'm, I'm agreeing with you. Uh, being in the tech field, I just don't see the need to force this because I think the market's going to basically tell it. If, if, if this works in gas stations, gas station providers will put it in place. I don't want to force this to anyone. I would tempt, as we build our library, that I would put those in the, that would make sense in those locations, even in the future. But, you know, forcing a poor gas station provider to put this in place in something that's going to brownfield itself out in the next 10 years doesn't make any sense to me. So I'm kind of with David.
There are no four gas stations.
Siri, did you have any input on this?
Um, I'm actually kind of leaning towards what you said because mo- most of the places where you actually park these days are coming up with, um, the EV charging stations being at, be at workplaces, at theaters, at grocery stores. So it's coming up based on where people are actually parking for a longer period of time. So rather than forcing it at this point, so that's why I'm kind of leaning in the direction that you were going with, um.
To me, that sounds like we have four against an ordinance requiring them at gas stations. Okay. So with that, I'll entertain a motion for the, the item.
So to motion this, we pull out, do we just cancel this whole thing?
No, no. So to Linda's point, we're, we're moving the, uh, municipal code amendments for the sign ordinance and the parking standards.
Okay.
And we gave staff direction that we're fine with the tasting room, which will come back at a later date with specific language. And we're essentially laying on the table the idea of requiring gas stations to, new gas stations to, uh, include vehicle charging stations.
Excellent. So moved.
That is correct.
Woo. Do I have a second?
So seconded.
Second by Pula Patti. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Aye.
Councilmember Pula Patti.
Yes.
Councilmember Sander.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Budge.
I'm staying.
Mayor Terry.
Aye. Okay. Oh, actually, and forgot. Now I've closed the public hearing. I'm rusty, folks. Give me one more meeting. I'll, I'll, I'll be back in shape. Okay, with that, we'll move on to item 14, regular calendar items and discussion and approval of the council members appointments to regional boards, commissions, and committees. I, I know, we can do this tonight. I would ask council that we also at least give me the opportunity to maybe have a conversation with, uh, Member Pula Patti. Because as of now, she's not, she doesn't have an appointment to any commission. She serves on a handful of the two by twos and some other things like that, but I do think it's very important, especially for new members to at least get exposed to some of these boards and commissions. So I'm fine passing this, but I'd actually like to have this agendized maybe next month at the second meeting of the month, um, in case we can identify something and I can have some conversations with other council members to see if maybe there's something that they may be willing to give up, um, in order to, to do that. But I, I just don't think by the second year that, that we, that everyone doesn't have at least something. That, that really has been the precedent for the last 19 years is that everyone has at least one, if not more. I know, I know I've always had a few less because I'm on all of the school two by twos, which maybe that doesn't have to happen, but, uh, the two by twos really aren't a substitute for experience in, in boards and commissions. So I, I'm fine entertaining a motion to pass this for now, um, with the understanding that I'd like it brought back within 30 days.
So just for staff clarification, I do need to notify each of these agencies, um, for what we passed this evening with the appointments. So I can go ahead and move forward with that and then bring it.
Yeah, my, my expectation is if we can identify, we're going, we're going to be changing one a month from now. So the rest of them wouldn't change. But assuming we can find one. So I have a, a motion from Gatewood. Do I have a second?
I appreciate that.
I think I heard a second from Sander. Roll call, please.
Second from Sander.
Councilmember Sander.
Aye.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Aye.
Councilmember Pula Patti.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Budge.
Yes.
Mayor Terry.
Aye. You're going to be on CACOG, Siri. Okay, moving on.
Well, I must say that, um, Mr. Sanders definitely overwhelmed, especially he's got, uh, he's got a lot. So, and he'd be a great mentor on a lot of these, so.
Well, let's have that discussion and we'll, we'll bring it back. Council requests for future agenda items. No? Nothing? Come on. Okay. Um, with that, we're going to adjourn to closed session.
This meeting is being recorded.
Was it not being recorded?
Do we just start recording?
No. Um, the cable commission is here recording the video, but we're going into, um, a closed session. They're not going to be recording the report out.
Okay.
And so we're going to record that portion in Zoom.
Okay. Okay. So with that, we will stand adjourned. Um, excuse me. Yeah, we're, we're adjourning to closed session. And, uh, I don't expect that to take too long, but we'll be back to report out. Merry Christmas to everyone that's leaving. Happy holidays.